The zoning board of appeals on the agenda tonight is the project we call Pudding Stone at Chestnut Hill. My name is Mark Zuroff and sitting as chairman and to my left is Christopher Hussey, to my right is Jonathan Book. Lark Palermo is sitting as a member of the board and we have up here with us Judy Barrett, who is our 40B expert. Let me go over some preliminaries. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to hear from some of the town boards that are involved in this process and to give the, some of the public opportunity to be heard on the project and then the applicant can respond to the public. The meeting will go as follows. We will call on the town boards that are here to give their testimony and we will then hear from the public. For all members of the public who are going to address the board, first of all, I remind you all that this is a public hearing and is being transcribed and a record is being kept. So each of you who wishes to speak to the board should approach the podium and speak clearly into the microphone and make sure that we have your name and address for the public record. I urge everyone who wants to speak to the board to make sure that you try to be as concise and direct as possible. We are interested in what you have to say, but we're not interested in hearing it 10 times, so hopefully you'll confine your testimony of what has not already been presented to the board. So again, this is a public hearing and it is being recorded, so be mindful of the fact that you have to be heard and understood. There is a public recorder here as well as the tape record, so we want to make sure that we get an accurate record. So that being said, I'll call upon those boards. Maria, if you'd like to step up.
Okay, I'm Maria Morelli. I'm a planner with the Town of Brookline. I first want to respond, if you notice at the first public hearing, I commented on the completeness of the application and I did receive all of the materials requested in my letter on May 23rd. There was one aspect of the local regs, so Brookline has ZBA regs and also has requirements for a complete application. And one of those requirements is actually that the applicant must show compliance with our stormwater bylaw, section 8.26. This is a general, this is a town bylaw. And the applicant's response was that they are not obligated to meet requirements that are more restrictive than what the state requires. And so Peter Ditto is here tonight to address that if you'd like him to. I'll just quickly say that 8.26 is consistent with the federal permit process, NPTDs. That's really all that is. And so because it is a federal process, we would expect that the applicant would be interested in getting a federal permit and therefore showing compliance with Article 8.26. So that is the only matter that's outstanding. And if you have any further questions about that, the Director of Transportation Engineering can address it.
Would you like him to address it now? Mr. Ditto?
About eight years ago, the town had to comply with what they called the Phase II NPTDs permit. And that was a federal permit and that basically tells the town how to treat the stormwater. Part of the requirements for that NPTDs permit was to establish a bylaw that would address basically three issues in stormwater. The first one was illicit connections were illegal, obviously, erosion and sediment controls, and post-construction managed stormwater management. So we took those three categories and developed a bylaw that was basically compliant with all the requirements of the NPTDs permit. So as Maria said, there is two sections of this permit that, you know, we would expect to get a plan on it anyway. And so the first one, the erosion and sediment control, that's basically making sure that there's no solids or silt or sand that run off the site, get into the town storage drainage system and clogs, reduces the capacity and clogs the system. So that's a, that's a standard on any site plan that we get in the engineering office. The second parcel, the post-construction stormwater management, that's, that's the nitty-gritty. That's when, you know, the developer applicant has to prepare a site plan. They addresses all the outstanding issues that are cited in actually the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. And that's things like how are you going to reduce the off-site runoff of the pre-developed site? How are you going to reduce the total suspended solids by 80%? And so there's a lot of stormwater issues, but there's also a lot of engineering technical issues like what's the slope, what's the slope of the storage sewer pipe? What's the make of the sewer pipe? So, and again, that's standard operating procedure for us, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate that there should be an issue on this because it's, it's basically business as usual.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, Peter, does that mean that it would be required as part of the building permit application process?
That's correct.
So is it necessary to address it here then, do you think?
You know, again, I wouldn't expect that to be an issue, so I don't know if it has to be addressed here.
Okay. But it will be addressed at one point through-
It has to be in order to get a building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan?
Well, I guess I'm a little confused if it's a requirement of the building to obtain a building permit. I'm not sure, this isn't really a question for you, Peter, but I'm not sure I understand the applicant's resistance to providing that information. Is it a matter of providing it now rather than later?
We're not 100% sure that the applicant is committed to opposing it, but I understand that there is some resistance because our code is a little bit more restrictive than the state requirement, but we're governed by the federal requirement as well. So I think that, I'll leave it to the applicant to address that, but my belief is that they will comply.
Sure. Did you, did you want to?
Hmm?
Okay. I just, I just wanted, I did get a very complete response to my letter about application completeness, but in the letter which you have, it's the last two pages of the eight and a half by 11 packet that you received, is Stan Tech's response to that issue saying that if they were required to show compliance with 8.26, they would ask for a waiver. And I, I just want to be clear that they, that they know the content of section 8.26 and if they still feel that way, because it was stated in writing that they would ask for a waiver from that bylaw.
Okay, so it's still up in the air as I understand it?
As far as I'm concerned, you've heard Peter say that it's something they would want to, information they would provide, but I just, I do have something in writing that says they, if they are pressed to, they would formally request a waiver from 8.26.
Okay. Anything else, Maria?
Not on application completeness? Okay. You have received letters from the Conservation Commission, members of the public, the Brookline Preservation Commission, the Neighborhood Conservation Commission, DPW in regard to engineering stormwater and traffic, and also the Planning Board and Deputy Superintendent Kyle McGechnon from the Fire Department is here. What I thought I might do was, is just provide some comments on behalf of the Planning Board. And just because everything seems to flow from site design, it might make sense to actually just revisit what the proposal is and go through the highlights from the Planning Board's letter. And then if you wanted to consult with Deputy Superintendent McGechnon or Peter Ditto further, it would make sense to do that after the site plan overview. Okay. All right. So it's, since it's been a month before we actually looked at the proposal, I thought I would just take a step back and have us look at the, the site overall. To put it in context, Hancock Village is a 70-acre site that straddles Brookline and Boston. Most of the units, 530, are on the Brookline side, and that's what you see in the darkened outline. The Boston line is right here and the complex, the Hancock Village complex continues into Boston there. To the left is the Horse Sanctuary that is town-owned. It's about 100 acres. The Baker School is up here. And the, and the, as you know, the ZBA did grant a comprehensive permit for 161 units. That was last year, and that situated or proposed along the upper edge of that, of that site, of the complex boundary. This is Beverly Road here, Russett Road here, Independence Drive here. Altogether, there are about 11 units in that existing green space. And then here is a four-story apartment building, about 109 units, with two levels of parking off Asheville Road. So that's a proposal. It's not built yet. It was part of the, the last comprehensive permit application. The site that's proposed for Pudding Stone is delineated by this light blue. There is an apartment building about six stories over two levels of parking. It's about 186 units and 230 some odd parking spaces. There are 67 surface parking. These three townhomes would have about four units each. They're about three stories. And then there are, if you could see the E1, 2, and 3, these are existing townhomes, about two stories, 28 units, and those would be renovated. What's also new is this drive that would come off. I should actually point out, this is Gary Sherman Road. You would actually, you enter here through Sherman. It's a one-way road that empties onto Independence here, and the direction of traffic is down and up. What the applicant is proposing is to enter through Gary, keep it one way, and then exit here. A drive from this, I guess the, the flat part of the U shape would be here and extend all the way to the end of that lot. There is a cul-de-sac and there is some surface parking here and here. The entrances to the lower level of the garage are here and up here, and if you need to get to the upper or lower level, you'd have to go outside of the building itself. Okay, just one more thing about the zoning. This is a multifamily district. This is an M 0.5 district, and what is up here is actually the S7. I actually went through that. We looked at the small site, so I won't spend time here. One thing that I just wanted to get out of the way, the Planning Board just had a little bit of an issue with the lot delineation. In most 40Bs, you see, the boundaries of the lot are pretty much defined. Here, this is a 70-acre site, and we certainly understand what the applicant is up against. They don't want to create zoning non-conformities on the 40A side. But I think the, the Planning Board felt a little constrained by these, these limits and questioned why the, the lot was configured in this, in this fashion. And as we'll see, because there were some, I guess inadequacies with the plan, there were some concerns with the plan, that the lot delineation was an issue for the Planning Board. Just again, not to repeat what I've just told you, just going to go over some of the things that I missed. 20% of the 226 total units would be affordable, and that's 46. The FAR, there's over 300,000 square feet of living area that would yield an FAR of point, of 1.31. There was a mistake in the Planning Board letter in that last paragraph, or toward the end, about some testimony that Mr. Levin had provided about FAR. And after we got the transcripts, we, we looked at that. Mr. Levin was correct. He was talking about the entire site, if both projects were built, and talking about FAR for the entire site. But I just want to make it clear, the application was correct regarding the proposed FAR of 1.31. The usable open space is a percentage, it's 30% of the GFA, and what's proposed there is a little over 20,000. 430 bedrooms, mostly one, two, and three beds. Okay, just a little bit about the existing development plan. So this is based on the Garden Village model. This was constructed in the mid-'40s, and what was significant about this pattern is that you have these, this U-shaped configuration, which allows you to have these courtyards with pedestrian pathways that lead to these roads like Gary Road. You also have more private areas, these rear yards in the darker grayish-green, which connect to open space. You see it here as well, which is that lower to left-hand quadrant, which is the, the site of the, of the proposed project. Just a couple of key points about this. In 2011, you, you might very well be aware that the town did, did propose a neighborhood conservation district for all of Hancock Village and Brookline, and the Attorney General did approve that, so that is established. There's also been a nomination form for national register status, which was given to not only the Mass Historical Commission, but the National Park Service. We recently received at the beginning of June a response from Mass Historical to the National Park Service, saying it is their policy not to process an, our nomination without the support of the applicant. The applicant, for the record, was not on board with the, the establish of the NCD or the national register status. A little bit more about what's going on here with the Horse Sanctuary. You might see these dashed lines. So the state has a 100-foot wetlands buffer, which is established here. Brookline has a more restrictive 150-foot buffer. This site is not going to be on the buffer itself, so therefore the Conservation Commission, which is charged by the state to have jurisdiction, doesn't have jurisdiction. However, as you'll read in the, in Tom, the Conservation Commission's letter, there might be some stormwater runoff that does go through a culvert, culvert in the wetlands area. And furthermore, I think the primary concern is what impact blasting would have on any wildlife that exists in the 100-acre sanctuary. A little note about Boston, too. They also have urban wilds and a conservation protection sub-district. They're certainly aware of the project and technically, again, they don't have jurisdiction because this project is outside of that 100-foot buffer. Okay, and that's, this is just another view, just showing you where the project is situated with the Horse Sanctuary and that driveway entrance. And another, just because the topography is very unique here, it is undulating. I wanted just to show you, this is, the Asheville Road would be about here, and this is the site of the first, the apartment building from the first proposal, the 109-unit apartment building here. The Pudding Stone apartment building would be about here. These are generally the highest elevations in that complex area. You see the elevation probably varies from 195 to about 174 this way. Okay. Just speaking about existing conditions and natural resources that do exist, this is showing the extent of the Pudding Stone that's in this area. If you did go on the site visit, you'll see that it takes up the expanse of that, that corridor, and you got in a sense of the height above grade. It could be about 20 feet at various points. Again, this is a tree survey that we did ask for. This is showing the trees that are existing and would be removed. And from the plantings plan, we, we see maybe just some, some buffering at the edge, but nothing that's really going to be as extensive or any replacement of the existing trees that you see here. Okay, so just a little bit about how the current architecture works. We talked about how that, the contours change. So these two-story townhomes, they're often connected and they're segmented so that as the topography changed, these segments of townhomes follow the topography. Okay, as you turn on Sherman Road, this is the flat part of that U-shaped road, you see Horse Sanctuary to the left, and to the right is the beginning of the, the entrance to the site, just to give you a sense of the streetscape. Okay, and this is actually with the Horse Sanctuary behind you facing the Pudding Stone. You sort of get a sense of how that topography works. Okay, just to situate us, we're going to be looking at the site plan. This is an elevation that, that shows this building, the apartment building, from this side where the garage entrances are, just a few specs. This is about a 457-foot long building. It's about, according to the height methodology, it's about 62 feet from natural grade, but what we're going to be looking at is what the Planning Board considered. And that's really the perspectives from people who are on grade in the surrounding townhomes. So at some points, as I will show you, you, you are going to be looking at this building and seeing maybe a 78 or 82 expanse. This is right here. We have new townhomes, about three, three stories. They're about 35 by 75 by, 35 feet high and 45 by 75 feet for their footprint. When you're coming along Sherman Road, this is one perspective. This is a rendering that was captured from the 3D model that was supplied. Okay, and this is another perspective with the Horse Sanctuary on the right. So what you'll see here, and this is one, a point that the applicant was making, that when you start to see the, the building, it's going to be nestled somewhat by that, that topography, by the contours, and by the buildings itself. And I think the Planning Board would, would strongly made this, this argument that the, the townhomes that are existing here really don't serve as buffering because, you know, people live there. These are Brookline residents, so they were very concerned about what their experience was going to be, maybe 30, 40 feet away from this building, and so they did give a lot of attention to that. And as I go through the slides, I'll just explain what that, illustrate some of the points that they were making in their letter, why this, this really matters. This is another perspective, just to show you how close and how the contours change. It actually declines about 10 or so feet from here toward the, the existing townhomes. And as we go through and look at some site sections that, that we asked for, you'll actually get to see how those contours change and that even though this is, I guess the Horse Sanctuary is on the other side, we don't have single-family homes. We are actually concerned about the experience of the residents who are going to be around this, this site.
Maria?
Yes?
I have a question. Could you go back to the previous? Those trees that seem to be-
Here.
-shedding a lot of things, shielding a lot of things. Are those existing trees that remain?
You know, it looked like, from what I could see from the plan, that they were going to be putting new plantings in, but honestly, I don't know their landscaping plan necessarily backwards and forward. It just, it seemed as though they were going to be removing quite a bit from the tree survey, which you have before you, and so these could be new plantings, so I'd have you ask the applicant directly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this was the, the overall, this is just a peek at the site plan, and these lines here where we have them lettered are just showing you some site sections that we asked for. And I'm going to go through that just to show you what some of this means. So the first thing we're going to be looking at is a site section going through here. We got it from this existing building on the Boston side, but what I'm showing you here is actually from this building from the bottom up. Okay, and what a site section is, it's just basically cutting, like cutting through a layer cake, and you get to see how the grade changes and the comparative heights of the buildings and the surrounding structures. So here, again, I'm just showing you what I'm measuring from. There's a person who's standing here at this, at this building, and you basically get to see, you know, what I've measured here is a 78-foot height, and the proximity is about maybe 35 or 40 feet away. There's not much in the way of buffering. There is a road that goes through here, so it is pretty much fully exposed. Okay, here's another section. It's cutting through this way, so it's along the, the length of the building. And what we're going to be starting with is this building here, which is E2 here, and this existing building, kind of, sort of can't see with the sun, but it's about here. So this is an existing building that's outside of the lot area, and we wanted to just point the relative change in, in grade. So it's about 20 feet, of 20-foot change or so. And again, there's not much in the way of buffering or open space areas that are going to soften that edge. And again, the proximity of the existing buildings, again, these are two-story townhomes in relation to the building, was a concern to the Planning Board. Okay, another perspective, C is, let me just look and actually, the sun is right where I need it to be. Okay, so this is actually right here along this L-shaped portion of the building, going right through here. So you're going to be looking at this building here, is actually this building here. And again, this is actually one of the more, one of the taller or more expansive exposures of the building is actually in relation here, where we have like a little bit of a pinch point. As you can see, it's relatively narrow here. And again, there's not much in the way of existing buffering. In fact, this 10-foot drop, there's a wall here, that 10-foot drop maybe emphasizes the expanse of that building. One of the goals of integrating a, a project with more density is to actually look at the natural resources, how much are they being used to mitigate the impact, the visual impact of that building? Or what allowances are there for open space or new plantings, again, to mitigate that effect? And one thing we wanted to show here, so this length here is about 225 feet. That's that L-shaped leg of the building, and so that's trying, it's not, we can't effectively show that, so that's why there is a break here. But if you were in this corridor, that's, that's the experience you would have looking at, at the building with the existing building to the left and then this leg of the proposed apartment building there. So overall, the footprint of this building in combination with the height and in combination with the relatively shallow setbacks. So you have setbacks in this configuration here, which are comparable to the setbacks that you have with this very, as the Planning Board puts it, foreign building typology. So there are greater expectations for deeper setbacks to mitigate the expansive height and footprint. Okay, so this is just to show you some renderings. We've been looking at the 2D plans, and this is from the 3D model. Just going down the driveway, the Horse Sanctuary is behind you, and you're moving toward that cul-de-sac. The existing townhomes are here that would be renovated. You'll see here, one of the concerns the Planning Board have were these garage entrances, garage doors, that were, again, so close to the existing townhomes. Again, there's nothing that's really buffering that noise. Again, just, this is what it looks like where you move around the cul-de-sac and then turn back. This is just another perspective of the relative change in contours and the proximity of those buildings. We talked a little bit, I alluded to, how are existing resources used to mitigate the increased density? And this is just an example that shows, this is from the, the applicant showing where they have usable open space. Now, our bylaw has several criteria so that you technically meet it. Two are, you need at least a 15 by 15-foot dimensions to, to qualify it as usable open space, and a slope not greater than 8%. Of course, this is a very slopy site. So what was circled here are where there is that functional usable open space. And the Planning Board feels that this is, you know, really an afterthought. This is just an example of a project being shoehorned rather than having usable open space or open space areas identified and designated as play areas or outdoor seating areas, certainly amenities for future tenants. One thing that you will note in this plan is, if you, if you can remember, that this is how the lot, the lease lot was delineated. Now, when I describe the existing development pattern, these pockets here were actually rear yards that are open space amenities for people who are living here. So as this is delineated, there's, they're actually diminishing the open space amenities from the 40A side. Okay, and a few more other things that I wanted to point out. You might say that there is a passive recreation area that is right across the street. There's the Baker School and the tennis courts. And the Planning Board wanted to make it really clear that if there is, they're really, I think, a well-designed plan- I think a well-designed plan actually has a balance of paved areas with open space areas. And this is a five-and-a-half-acre site, and perhaps there's about 48%, according to the applicant, of lot coverage in terms of the building footprints and the paved drives and surface parking. Yet, you don't see two, two-and-a-half acres of open space. You certainly don't see it distributed throughout this plan in a way that kind of reinforces the development pattern of the existing townhomes. We're not suggesting that there should be a garden village model here. We understand the constraints that the applicant has and certainly in wanting to expand their development. However, it was just really hard to reconcile the fact that so much of this is devoted toward the actual built-up environment and no usable open space amenities. Okay, we're not going to go through waivers, but I did want to point out, if you can read it, just some of the selected land use metrics. So these categories here indicate areas in the bylaw from which this project would need relief in order to be built. Number one would be lot size. So in our bylaw for this MO5 district, you would give 3,000, or a lot, 3,000 square feet of surface area for the first unit and 2,000 square for the subsequent. So just doing like a back of the envelope, for 226 units with the as-of-right rule of thumb, you'd need a lot area of over 450,000 square feet. The existing lot area would support about 118 units as-of-right. The, the project requires relief from .5 ratio for FAR. What is proposed is 1.3. Again, we alluded to how is the massing distributed on the project site, so we're not really interested in what the overall FAR is for the site. We're really looking at, again, those relative setbacks in relation to the height and also the open space amenities that are provided. The building height, because of this footprint, this is a 457-foot-long building that is, that ranges from 65 to 250 feet wide at its thickest. And in proximity, you have two and, two and two-and-a-half-story townhomes maybe 30 to 40 feet, 45 feet away. That seemed to create a really oppressive barrier. One of the things that the planning board was asking and why they were so frustrated with this delineation of the lot is, could, could something have allowed for maybe demolition of existing buildings that would allow for larger building, existing buildings, or maybe apartment buildings that were too, just to break up that really oppressive barrier and wall? They were concerned about view sheds, light, and air resources. Even from like a building code point of view, even if that is met, it just seemed to be a really oppressive proposal. The minimum yard setbacks, I've already went over. And again, I talked about usable open space. Again, for this five-and-a-half-acre site, there is relatively little. There's about 7% of the gross floor area is, is proposed for usable open space. That's just the traffic. So the issues that were to be addressed, and I, I understand that Mr. Levin did respond to the planning board's letter, you do have that copy in your packet, and I just wanted to briefly respond and say, the planning board is not opposed to development on this site, certainly not opposed to affordable housing on this site. I think they had mentioned Independence Drive, just to get it on record, because they are design professionals. If they had the opportunity, they probably would propose density at the edge where you have a public way. They understand what is before the ZVA, and therefore they can find their comments to the site itself. But some of the things they were thinking about, is there any flexibility with the lot delineation? And certainly, that, that apartment building and maybe the number of buildings, there's just so much lot coverage, that barrier is really oppressive to the existing townhomes. If there's some way to break up that massing, certainly more than articulation, but actually the footprint itself and the height and length of the building. The Horse Sanctuary, just to note about that, it's important from the, the town isn't exactly a direct abutter in the sense that the boundary of the Horse Sanctuary doesn't come up against the leased lot line. The leased lot line runs through the center of Gary Road, but it's in a butter in the sense that there is going to be some visual impact. And I showed you what that streetscape looks like. The town would be interested in having a deeper setback, so that the, that apartment building might be so-called nestled, but it's still, there is going to be a visual impact and a lot of those natural resources, like the Pudding Stone. And as you could see from the tree survey, all of those trees being cut down certainly changes that streetscape. So unless you have any questions, that really concludes my comments from the planning board.
I've got just one, I guess. Could you go back to the slide that showed the delineation of the property here? And you said the planning board had a couple of issues with that delineation.
Yes.
Including reducing the open space of existing residences, which I understand, I'm not sure I quite understand the demolition of existing buildings. And then you mentioned a third concern they had, and I wondered if there was anything else?
Well, I think what they were just mentioning about demolition, you know, it just seemed like a contrived delineation. I mean, could it have been expanded? Could there have been more density along the legs of Gary and Sherman Road? So if this lot delineation had been expanded to maybe this quadrant to allow for reasonable density and height along Gary, the legs of Gary and Sherman, rather than right through the center where you can see there is, there used to, there is an existing visual link, a physical connection to the Horse Sanctuary. I mean, right now, you'd have to go through a more convoluted way to get there. There's a view shed that visually connects this open space with the Horse Sanctuary. And certainly, you know, the board wanted to make it very clear that this was not a passive-aggressive attempt to thwart any, any construction on the site, just have it be done in a way that makes more sense, that abides by more universal design principles for accommodating density.
Good, thank you. Jonathan?
Yeah.
Lark?
Thank you.
Anything else, Maria?
That'll be it.
Okay. Is there any member, any other members of the town boards that want to address town boards?
Yes, I serve on the NCDC.
You may approach then.
My name is Robin Kuchar, and I'm a member of the NCDC. I don't know if you've gotten around to looking at the letter completely, but I would like to go over it. I will do that as expediently as I can.
Let me just interrupt you by, you telling the audience that these letters have been submitted, they are on the site now and available for your review. So I encourage every member of the public to access the site and read all these submissions.
The NCDC Commission has evaluated the present Pudding Stone at Chestnut Hill 40B proposal employing the Hancock Village NCD guidelines as its analytic framework. It has also more generally considered the proposed development's appropriateness for the site with particular reference to the site's existing development pattern, which Maria had mentioned. The Chestnut Hill proposal disrupts the carefully designed layout of open spaces and the interface of the residential units to each other. The apartment house structure with its parking completely obliterates the characteristic natural landscape feature of the area by blasting away the large Pudding Stone outcrop from which ironically, the project seems to have derived its name. The siting, regrading, and scale of the proposed apartment building and townhouses are incongruous with the scale and massing as well as the architecture of the two-and-a-half-story predominantly brick U-shaped apartment blocks. The proposed plan destroys the predominantly significant aspects of this historically important garden city slash garden apartment block project and its separation of pedestrian and vehicle, vehicular circulation paths. The architecture of the proposed new buildings overshadows the existing buildings, both figuratively and literally, as it would be on a high point on the south edge of the property. It bears no relationship to the intimate and cohesive original design. The introduction of so much impervious surfaces also contradicts the area's signature element, green open spaces. If some version of this proposal is to go forward, more attention should be paid to harmonizing the scale and detail of the existing structures. The original 1947 project included buildings in a continuous, almost flowing character, surrounded by open space courtyards. The new construction interrupts this flow with additional parking, out-of-scale townhouses, the introduction of a new road and rotary, and a massive apartment building that is more suitable in an industrial office park than in a garden apartment complex setting. The proposed new buildings could be less complex in massing and detailing and be more in scale with the Hancock Village complex. Hancock Village is an intact, highly successful planned development embodying well-thought-out relationships among its structures. The site's natural contours and its adjacent neighborhood of single-family homes, and you know this, you've heard it before, developed between 1946 and '49, it was undertaken by the John Hancock Mutual Life Insurance Company to meet the area's critical need to provide affordable housing for returning war veterans. In consideration for a zoning change from single to multifamily housing granted by the town, the company proposed a development that would be more affordable than contemporary single-family homes in the neighborhood, but would embody the best thinking about residential development of its time, as indicated in historical documents. Laid out by Olmstead Associates of Brookline, Hancock Village represents the culmination of an enveloping strand of American autumnal age residential development that had its beginning in the mid-1930s as the garden village model, which is distinct from the earlier English garden city model. Its hallmarks are respect for the natural and topographical character of its site, separation of pedestrians from automobile traffic, and the orientation of the living space away from the street and towards common green space. Each of the Hancock Village dwelling unit occupies a townhouse of two stories, mostly topped by a peaked roof. Each unit has its own separate entrance, the front door of which characteristically opens into a green courtyard, providing pedestrian access to the village streets. At the rear, each has a patio within a sheltered hierarchical system of green spaces consisting of a communal, communal open space overlooked and bounded on three sides by its townhouse rows and at the open end connecting to a network of rusted green corridors that filter through the development. In assigning these open space sequences, Olmstead Associates, rather than being daunted by the site's genius loci, its rising and falling terrain, and its predominant rock outcroppings, use them to provide the development's visual interest. One such corridor running north-south through the village incorporates the area's highest point, crowned with a Pudding Stone outcropping to form a small urban wild. In addition to weaving the village together with internal more rusted green corridors, Olmstead Associates laid out a more urbane green belt of linear parkland along its northern edge. This undulating greenswar framed by mature trees simultaneously provides the green space into which the communal green spaces and patios of the northernmost townhouses open and a recreation zone for perhaps a quarter of the site's Brookline residents. The plant, the plant's circulation system is an integral complement to the village's open space layout. The green zones between the townhouse clusters organize paths and spaces that separate pedestrians from automobiles. Cars are accommodated by a logically coherent roadway system consisting of a central, consisting of a central street, Independence Drive, which connects Hancock Village to surrounding communities and off of which run looped local roadways that provide parking for the apartments and access to two original parking garages. It is important to note that none of the original roads are dead ends and that the proposed new road with rotary creates a new circulation pattern. Overall, the Olmstead Associates' plan is a logically coherent system of residences situation, situated with a green, undulating, natural setting. The integrated design of townhouses, open spaces, paths, and roadways that provide Hancock, Hancock Village's distinctive character remains intact today nearly 70 years after its development. In recognition, in recognition of its importance as a culminating example of the garden village movement, in 2011, the Town of Brookline and the City of Boston, both in their roles as Massachusetts Historical Commission certified local governments, declared it to be eligible for the listing in the National Register of Places. And I understand what has occurred in terms of the letter from the MHC back to the Department of Interior. However, this is the letter that was sent prior to that. Such CLG opinions are presumptively dispositive. Among the defining features mentioned in their opinions was the green belt. In an occurrence dated June 22, 2012, the Mass Historical Commission agreed with the MC, the CLG opinion that Hancock Village meets National Register Criteria A and C and possibly B for listing at the state and local level, levels, meeting only one criterion is required. The three pertinent criteria are: associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history; associated with the lives of persons significant in our past; embodies distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or a method of construction; or that would represent the work of a master, or that possesses high artistic values; or that represent a significant and distinguishable entity which components may lack individual distinction. In recognition of Hancock Village historic distinction, the Town of Brookline considered giving it further protection by establishing the property as an L, local historic district. It determined, however, that such a designation would be inadequate in that LHDs do not address landscape features, paving, and areas not visible from a public way. Accordingly, the town established the property as its first neighborhood conservation district, which in the form adopted is the strongest, thank you, the strongest tool available to it to preserve not only the village's built character, but also that of its encompassing landscape. The district's guidelines, which is Town Bylaw Section 5.10, .3, .D, .1 in the attachment, identify the elements of a site plan that are to be preserved. Its architectural style and character, its building size, height, and massing. Significant negative impacts pertain to removal or alteration of outcroppings, alternation of existing grades, removal of existing pedestrian paths, addition of new impervious surfaces, loss of open space, or the green belt buffer. The Commission has reviewed the proposed project in the context of the Hancock Village guidelines in making its determination as to the appropriateness of the conceptual project design. The Commission is cognizant of the fact that the local guidelines are local requirements and regulations within the meaning of the 40B regs. The Commission's findings follow. The Commission finds that the proposed conceptual site plan is inappropriate to the existing context of Hancock Village in the following important respects. First, it violates the hierarchical system of open spaces that form the basis for the village's land, layout, sorry. Specifically, the introduction of two-and-a-half-story flats, their service road, and accessory parking, which being, which is being forced into open space courtyards for the existing townhouses. In addition, the green space with its mature vegetation and Pudding Stone outcropping will be obliterated to accommodate the new, large apartment building, which Maria was talking about, what the planning department was concerned about, thus destroying the site's undulating character and genus loci. It would obliterate the ledge and eliminate it as open space by citing a six-story apartment building in its place. And these elements of the design place it in direct conflict with the Hancock Village NCDC Guidelines, Section 5.10, .3, .D, .1, VA through E. The proposal is inconsistent with Hancock Village's defining scale and architecture and focus of sections through 1 through 5 of the Hancock Village Neighborhood Conservation District Guidelines. As it is set forth more fully under the 40B Design Review Criterion, building massing the proposed 77-foot-high and 457-foot-long apartment building consumes the expanse of the sightline corridor. The relatively shallow setback of the new apartment building along with its massive bulk overshadows and imposes a wall-like effect on the 20 existing two-story townhouses. The Neighborhood Conservation District Commission believes that a more appropriate plan and design could be developed which would respect and retain the historic and architectural qualities of Hancock Village. This plan would include, would involve applying the universal design principle of locating increased density at the edge of the site, in this case along Independence Drive. This would allow the project to achieve several important goals of developing more affordable housing, maintaining the community standards of the nearby single-family neighborhood, and most importantly, conserving the character-defining qualities of this historically significant Hancock Village site and nearby conservation areas. The, the Commission has carefully considered the Pudding Stone at Chestnut Hill 2016 Chapter 40B proposal within the framework of the Hancock Village NCD guidelines. In doing so, it focused particularly on the features that distinguish the village's historically significant design and on its relationship to the budding neighborhood, as well as to the NCDC guidelines adopted to conserve Hancock Village's design. The Commission finds that the proposal in its current iteration is not appropriate for the reasons set forth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other boards or commissions that want to be heard? Then at this point, I'm going to call on the public, and if you want to speak... Then, at this point, I'm going to call on the public, and if you want to speak, I'm going to ask that you line up, and you can choose your own order, first come, first served. And I remind you that we want to hear from you, but we want to hear your opinion and your new testimony as opposed to what we've already heard. Mr. Cumenti, you can start us off.
Thank you. My name is Steve Cumenti. I live at 262 Russet Road, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 16. This hearing is directed by the Housing Appeals Committee Regulations, and as one-sided as that process is, the regulations do give this board discretion to deny or downsize this project based on the criteria set out in the regulations. Having been through the hearings on the first project, it appeared that certain of the regulations that bear on this process deserve particular additional attention. I would like to comment on why those provisions deserve careful consideration. The simplest statement of the board's mission is to review the project and either deny the project or approve the project subject to conditions, for example, downsizing the project, in a way that balances local concerns with local need for affordable housing. Both "local concern" and "local need" are defined terms in the regulation. I'll get to them in due course. Before considering what those terms mean in this context, however, the regulations provide specific guidance as to the conduct of this board's hearing. First point is that the town boards matter. Section 56.05 prescribes rules pertaining to the conduct of the local hearing, that is, the ZBA hearing process. Under Paragraph 8, the regulation provides that, quote, "In making the board's decision, the board shall take into consideration the recommendations of local boards, but shall not be required to adopt same." Thus, the permitting authority of town boards is consolidated in the local zoning board, but the zoning board is directed to consider the input of the other town boards. Law and regulation consolidates permitting in this board, but it does not otherwise dispense with the role of other town boards. The regulation stipulates that this board shall consider the input of towns' boards in arriving at its decision. The regulation defines "local boards" to include any local board or official, including but not limited to any Board of Survey, Board of Health, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, Water, Sewer, or other commission or district, Fire, Police, Traffic, or other department, Building Inspector, or similar official or board, City Council, or Board of Selectmen. Having been present for all hearings on the developer's first project, I'm not able to identify any concerns expressed by the town boards that had a discernible impact on the outcome. It seems as though the ZBA believed, quote, "comprehensive" on quote permit meant that the concerns expressed by other town boards were not an essential part of the process, as was, for example, the testimony of other experts. The regulation indicates, on the contrary, that the ZBA is to consider such input in weighing local concerns. The other board input is comprehensive here, but not ignored. And as I say, it was hard to recognize what impact they had on the first outcome. Second point is that I want to make is that peer review, in a complex case like this, is insufficient. The regulation provides that the board may rely upon peer reviewers for testimony regarding the various technical aspects of the project. Peer reviewers are reviewers who are hired by the town but who are paid by the applicant. Matters for expert review would include at least water, water control, traffic, building, and site design, and so on. The town, I feel, was not well-served by the peer review process in the project, and it was explained at the time on the ground that the reviewers were restricted to commenting on the studies presented by the developer. This does correctly reflect the regulatory restriction for peer review. And the problem: The regulation provides that, and this is 56.05, still about local hearings, "If the board determines that in order to review the application it requires technical advice in such areas as civil engineering, transportation, environmental resources, design review of buildings and sites, that is unavailable for municipal employees, it may employ outside consultants. The board may, by majority vote, require that the applicant pay a reasonable review fee for the employment of outside consultants chosen by the board alone." It goes on to provide that "A review fee may be imposed only if the work of the consultant consists of review of studies prepared on behalf of the applicant and not of independent studies on behalf of the board." Therefore, it's a correct statement of the regulation that peer review paid for by the developer is limited to review of studies provided by the developer. That's a quote from some writing by Edie Netter, you may remember. "As a result, the review of issues related to the first project were limited to evidence or tests presented by the applicant. Issues about timing of water tests, intersections chosen for examination for traffic and for parking seemed calculated to direct peer review to the applicant's desired result. I've asked, and ask again, that the town take the role of independent expert testimony seriously in complex projects such as this. The expert review is the raw material for your decision to deny or limit the size of the project. We need independent examination of the local concern issues, especially with respect to traffic and water. Peer reviewers, even though chosen by the board, are not adequate, since the review is limited to studies provided by the developer. As a general matter, it may be appropriate to rely on peer review in a straightforward case, but in complex cases, the town should not rely on studies prepared on behalf of the applicant instead of independent studies on behalf of the board." The Housing Appeals Committee Regulations go on to basically describe your role, the role of this board, essentially describing it as, in effect, being the same as the Housing Appeals Committee role in reviewing your decision, in that you're directed to look to their regs and their rules about how they conduct their review in conducting yours. It has been stated often that 40B trumps local rules and regulations, which is a reference to zoning bylaws. However, the regulations direct this board to follow the specific elements of review which the Housing Appeals Committee would apply to its review of an appeal of this board's decision. The elements include many of the issues that are dealt with in our zoning bylaws. In particular, the Housing Appeals Committee, and therefore this board, will review the factors which comprise the assessment of local concerns and light of local need for housing, as set out in 56.07, which applies to Housing Appeals Committee review. These provisions apply to the board here as well. Under 56.05, the local hearings, it specifies regarding the scope of board hearing in commentary, "In its conduct of a hearing, the board should make itself aware of the detailed provisions for burden of proof and evidence," set forth in 56.07, that the Housing Appeals Committee would apply to the appeal of a board decision. The regulations direct this board to follow the specific elements of review the Housing Appeals Committee would apply to its review of an appeal of the board's decision. In particular, the Housing Appeals Committee, and therefore this board, will review the factors which comprise the assessment of, quote, "consistency with local needs," as set out in detail in 56.07. It's Paragraphs 2 and 3 of 56.07. Paragraph 2 pertains to burden of proof, and Paragraph 3 describes the elements that are often repeated about site design and open space and safety and so on. But I want to first deal with Paragraph 2, because there are a few elements in burden of proof that I think are important here. First and foremost is the issue of financial feasibility. Financial feasibility is a valid local concern. It has been stated repeatedly, particularly in the hearing for the prior project, that no considerations regarding the project's burden on the town's duty to provide services are allowed. That's not exactly what the regulation states. In 56.07, Paragraph 2, burden of proof, it states the board's case, regarding the board's case, "In the case of either a denial or an approval with conditions, if the denial or conditions are based upon the inadequacy of existing municipal services or infrastructure, the board shall have the burden of proving that the installation of services adequate to meet local needs is not technically or financially feasible." And they go on to define what they mean by financially feasible. "Financial feasibility may be considered only where there is evidence of unusual topographical, environmental, or other physical circumstances which make the installation of the needed service prohibitively costly. In this regard, the financial feasibility of accommodating the project, particularly with respect to construction of a school, for example, is a valid local concern in light of the unavailability of developable, usable space in Brookline. The town has recognized that all of its primary schools are overcrowded. The Baker School is the most overcrowded, with 20% higher enrollment than planned, and this is before the developer has added a single additional student from his first proposed project. There has been a community process for several years now in trying to plan for an additional ninth primary school. Despite the time and energy spent by parent committees, town staff, and boards, there is still no decision on where a school should be located, or could be located. The delay has been the unavailability of suitable land on which to put a school, and even if the location were resolved tomorrow, it would be several years before an additional school would be available. Here, the fact of cost of services, including a pending override, even before we consider what this project will do to the town, is not the issue we are raising. The specific problem which is a valid local concern is the unavailability of buildable land to accommodate additional schools, et cetera. It was suggested in the board hearing on November 24th that ZBA of Sunderland versus Sugar Bush Meadow means financial feasibility may not be considered by this board. A reading of the actual regulation quoted above, and a reading of the case, shows that is not accurate, at least the regulation states more than that. In the Sunderland case, among the concerns raised in objecting to the project under consideration, the ZBA of Sunderland had pointed to the expense the town would face and that there would be a need for an additional school, a fire truck, and other public service costs. Sunderland objected that the expense of providing the necessary services was the problem. Sunderland did not base the lack of financial feasibility on the topographical, environmental, or physical constraints which faced the town in attempting to provide such facilities. In fact, topographically, environmentally, and physically speaking, Sunderland is substantially farmland. As Sunderland described itself on the Massachusetts website, under Community Profile, quote, "The Town of Sunderland is a rural residential community in the southeast corner of Franklin County. Sunderland has a long history of agricultural operations, many of which continue today, including several active dairy farms, tobacco farms, produce farms, and maple sugaring businesses." The issue for Sunderland was the expense of providing necessary public services. Sunderland's local concerns were not based on the topographical, environmental, or physical limitations which would have made the expense of the project unfeasible. And on that basis, the SJC upheld the Housing Appeals Committee's decision to ignore the cost of additional municipal services as a local concern to Sunderland. The topographical, environmental, and other physical circumstances of Sunderland have nothing in common with Brookline. With respect to Brookline, the applicant's project is not financially feasible, not because of the necessary additional public services as such, but due to the topographical, environmental, and physical constraints which Brookline faces in finding space for additional schools and so on, which make accommodation of a substantial increase in population in this area of town financially unfeasible. Brookline is not farmland. It is effectively built out. That is a topographical, environmental, physical constraint that we face even now, before the addition of hundreds of apartments to the area, and that constitutes a legitimate local concern and proper for consideration under the regulation. Compared to Brookline, Sunderland is the wrong facts. I don't doubt that some people are going to mention the schools, and I think in this context, I would have to say Sunderland is not the point, and it was mentioned many times in the prior hearing. Evidence to be heard, this is Paragraph 3 of How to Conduct the Hearing. "The committee will hear evidence only as to matters actually in dispute, and below are examples of factual areas of local concern in which evidence may be heard if they are relevant to issues in dispute. These examples are not all-inclusive." And then, basically, this lists the usual list that you've heard over and over again: health, safety, and environment, site and building design, and open space. Town boards, citizens, and I expect expert reviewers, peer or otherwise, have and will comment on the first two areas, health, safety, and site and building design. I'd like to add a comment on the third item, of local concern, open space. The regulation defines open space for its purpose. Open space means land areas, including parks, parkland, and other areas which contain no major structures and are reserved for outdoor recreational conservation, scenic, or other similar use by the general public, through public acquisition easements, long-term lease, trusteeship, and other title restrictions with run with the land. I understand Brookline has a definition of open space, but this is the definition of open space that the regulation's referring to, where it discusses the need for open space. I'd like to point out that this is a neighborhood of young children, including Hancock Village, which overall is an 800-unit apartment complex. There is no recreational park in Brookline, Precinct 16. As the developer has pointed out in the past, in the context of the first project, there is a cemetery, there is a schoolyard, and, of course, there's the Potherham Golf Course. Well, I wrote down, and I'll read it, "Potherham, there are not many eight-year-olds who own golf clubs and have fifty bucks to pay for a round of golf. None of this is open space as defined in the regulation. The nearest recreational open space is in West Roxbury, Boston, across a four-lane divided highway. As a result, there was a moderators committee to study the advisability of taking part of Hancock Village, traditionally used as a park, primarily by Hancock Village residents." That issue's still open. With regard to open space and the proposed project, the regulation provides that "The committee may receive evidence of the following matters: The availability of existing open spaces; Two, current and projected utilization of existing open spaces and consequent need, if any, for additional open spaces by the municipality's population, including occupants of the proposed housing." Of course, this project, like the first project, makes no provision for open space, other than landscaping the parking lots. The regulatory paragraph also makes clear that the impact on the renters of Hancock Village should be taken into account as well. "Relationship of the proposed site to any municipal open space or outdoor recreation plan officially adopted by the planning board and to any official actions to preserve open space, taken with respect to the proposed site by the town meeting or city council prior to the date of the applicant's initial submission. The inclusion of the proposed site in any such open space or outdoor recreation plan shall create a presumption that the site is needed to preserve open space." The history of the planning for Hancock Village is long and complex. The open space at Hancock Village is specifically referenced in the 2010 Brookline Open Space Plan as a large and significant parcel that should have priority for open space protection. The 2005-2015 Comprehensive Plan set a goal of no net loss of open space, and in November 2011, town meeting overwhelmingly voted to form a neighborhood conservation district at Hancock Village. This NCD preserves the site design as garden apartments with landscaping that preserves the character of front and backyards, garden-village style. The NCD provisions were adopted by town meeting by a vote of 200 to 24, and approved by the Attorney General. The regulations therefore stipulate that these official actions create a presumption that the site is needed to preserve open space. My last point, do local concerns outweigh the local need for affordable housing? So, I've been discussing local concerns. We're going to discuss what the definition of local need means for the purpose of comparing local need and local concerns. In balancing local concern against local need for affordable housing, it is necessary to consider the effect of the project to provide for local need. By definition, local need is a reference not to housing units, like the subsidized housing index, but to the number of persons in Brookline who would be eligible for subsidized housing, persons who live in households with less than 80% of the area median income. The funny math that counts 100% of a project toward the subsidized housing index, when only 25%, or in this case, 20% of the apartments, are affordable, pertains only to the calculation of subsidized housing index. Only apartments which actually provide affordable housing address local need. We are not directed to pretend that local need is addressed by 100% of the project, that fake math applies only in calculating subsidized housing index for purposes of determining a developer's ability to seek appell. It's got nothing to do with this hearing. Local need is a percent of the households below 80% of... Local need is a percent of the households below 80% of area median income. Only apartments rented to households with less than 80% of area median income actually address the need for affordable housing. In fact, Brookline's need for local, for local need for affordable housing is actually somewhat less than the regional need. More affordable housing is always welcome, and Brookline has consistently welcomed it. Originally, all of Hancock Village was intended as what was considered affordable housing in 1946. The rezoning that was necessary to change a golf course into over 500 affordable apartments on the Brookline side of the border with Boston was passed by town meeting in 1946 by a vote of 192 to 3. Brookline does promote various effective programs to add to the town's stock of affordable housing. Adding affordable housing under the circumstances prescribed by 40B seriously restricts the ability of the town to manage the nature of such projects. We are permitted to control such projects to the extent that local concerns outweigh the local need for 40B affordable housing as defined in the regulation. Under the provision for evidence, which this board may consider in achieving that balance, the regulation provides that, and this is 56.07, paragraph three evidence, balancing. "If a municipality attempts to rebut the presumption that there's a substantial housing need which outweighs local concerns, the weight of the housing need will be commensurate with the regional need for low or moderate-income housing, considered with the proportion of the municipality's population that consists of low-income persons. In this regard, housing need is defined to mean the regional need for low and moderate-income housing, considered with the number of low-income persons in the municipality affected." As I noted, this definition of housing need is a reference not to a number of apartments, like the subsidized housing index, but to the number of households in Brookline which would be eligible for subsidized housing, households with less than 80% of the area median income. The percentage of households with income less than 80% of the area median income in the Boston metropolitan area is 45%. The percentage of such households in Brookline is less than 30%. In the context of 40B's definition of affordable housing, our local need is 2/3 of the regional need. That is 30% versus 45%. Therefore, local concerns should be subject to a lower threshold to outweigh our local The board's task, which can be simply stated but is not simple, is that the board is to compare the town's local need for affordable housing to the local concerns that arise from the applicant's project, as the project may be modified in the hearing process. It's not clear from the regulations or cases exactly how you are to compare weightless, dimensionless concepts, but that's the task. We believe that the local need and the regulations properly understood and applied do not justify anything remotely like the size and scope of the applicant's proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one note, and without being critical of anyone in particular, but the prior project has no relevance to this project, so.
I'm Judy Leichner, and I'm a town meeting member in, I'm sorry, I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 16. And I understand what you said, I just, I do think there is a slight overlap. And I thought I would just kind of acknowledge the elephant in the room that it's no secret that the first project and the decision of the ZBA is being challenged in Land Court and that Judge has set a court date for November, and also a date where he's going to conduct a site visit so he can come to his own conclusion about the project. And we're very hopeful that these procedures will have a better outcome. But first of all, there is the question of whether Mass Development has this statutory authority to issue a 40B eligibility letter for residential development on a property that's not blighted. This is an open question in the act of lawsuit over the first Hancock Village 40B project. And if they don't have the statutory authority to issue that PEL, then we're again involved in a long process of hearings that probably never should have been started. I'm going, because Steve covered a lot of what I said, I'm going to try to skip, so forgive me if I just go through some stuff. As Steve mentioned, there are many areas of local concerns that you can investigate. And I did want to just emphasize the fact that the ZBA was only permitted to consider peer review, and we urged the ZBA, I want to second what Steve said, to request funds for independent review of the effects of traffic, stormwater, fire safety, open space, including that for the residents of Hancock Village, for the reasons that, the obvious optics of impartiality, but also because your, the peer reviews are limited to a review of the procedures that the developers' consultants, to ensure that they meet industry standard practices. And independent reviews could possibly critique and find out if we could get the best and most appropriate project. And that way, the ZBA will know what to aspire toward when trying to shape and evaluate this proposal. And these consultants could be used for other 40B projects that are now coming before the town. We also hope that the consideration of this project will reflect the cumulative impact of the two developments, going from 530 existing units to close to 900 units in Brookline alone, remembering that Hancock Village is already one of the two largest housing complexes in all of Brookline. Although there are some aspects of this project that are better than Project One. For instance, all the traffic going on to Independence Drive is quite an improvement. Refurbishing some existing buildings, and clearly not being in the green belt, but this project has some significant issues that need to be addressed. And Maria talked about many of those things. But the ideas presented in the first paragraph of the planning board letter, using conceptual design principle that increased density is more efficiently situated at the edge of a site on a public way, in this case, Independence Drive, is one that many of us have supported since this process began almost seven and a half years ago. And we would love to see something like that pursued. There are the local concerns that Steve mentioned, safety, and I will remind you that last time Chief Ford said at the beginning of the last hearing that Hancock Village is at the far end of the community. And he stated that the department cannot make a full first alarm assignment anywhere down there in the eight minutes, which is a safety standard that they use. He also stated that the existing residents would endure more safety issues because of the density increase. And I hope, sorry, that that will be considered this time. The site building design, the physical characteristics of the land also need to be considered, as you saw by the drawing that Maria showed and all of you, as did I, saw on the site visit, that close to 200 trees are going to be cut down. Green areas are going to be covered with pavement, there's going to be significant blasting, and the total decimation of Pudding Stone, at least 20,000 tons, according to what the developer reported at the February Selectment hearing, although at least one planning board member stated he thought it would be much more. And as you heard, the planning board letter lists many specific details about the design as one that basically shoehorns the buildings into this site. Also, as noted, this is a historic property eligible for the National Register, and we hope the historic nature of the property will be considered. The scope of this project, just like the first, is manifest by scale, and the massing is a major concern. That concern was expressed in Project One, and I'm not speaking to that. The ZBA did consider that issue, but did not consider the key question of how much the project could feasibly be scaled back to best balance this local concern, rather considered where the units should be put, without dealing with the key question of massing and scale, although I do remember Mr. Zaroff, you tried many times to have that discussed. If the ZBA had truly addressed this question the first time, it would have scaled back the project until the developer felt the need to request a pro forma review of the project financials. That the developer did not request pro forma review seems to be strong evidence that the project could have feasibly been scaled back further. The regulations specify exactly what criteria you can use, and Steve has gone into that in great detail. I hope that you're going to use every opportunity to use these criteria, the site, open space, environment, to alter this project so that it makes the smallest possible negative impact on Brookline and this neighborhood, including our Hancock Village neighbors, while still addressing the local need for affordable housing. We believe that a crucial measure of whether or not you will have succeeded in adequately minimizing the negative impacts of the project is whether or not the developer requests that pro forma review. This request should be considered almost a threshold criteria as to whether or not the ZBA has fulfilled its responsibilities to Brookline in properly balancing local concerns and local needs. I must say, we respect the time and effort that you ZBA members volunteer in service of our town. At the same time, we depend on the ZBA to do the right thing, protect the interests of all of Brookline and our neighborhood. As we proceed with the ZBA hearings on Hancock Village, Project Two, and Pudding Stone, we look forward to a process that reflects and incorporates these legitimate local concerns. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is William Varell. I live at 45 Asheville Road in Brookline. Before I start, I apologize, I don't have any visuals, but I do reference the documents. I was wondering if you guys had copies of the stormwater report? I'm going to address mostly stormwater tonight up there.
We do.
You do. And I'm not sure whose computer, but would it be possible to go back to the image?
It's on the site. I don't know if you've accessed it. Have you? Stormwater? No. Well, I've seen it.
Okay. I was just wondering if I could, this computer, is it possible to page up to this? That's fine. Okay, we'll just do our best.
Excuse me for a minute.
Sure.
Do you want to entertain this this evening, or when you have the site civil review of the project, which would be taking up stormwater at that time with your?
It probably would be more appropriate if we had the study. You're addressing something that we haven't had a chance to review yet.
I understand, but I think this goes to the point that the others have made before about independent engineering analysis rather than review.
Then let me suggest that if you want to address that particular issue, that you do that without getting into specifics about the stormwater itself, because we need time to hear about the provisions that the developer has made for that and to hear our board.
It hasn't even been presented yet, really.
Right. Hasn't been presented yet.
Well, okay, that's fair enough, but the documents are on the site, and you've had a chance to review them.
All right. So I'm going to ask that you confine your comments to the issue that you just raised, which is, you know, whether we should review it, how you want us to review it, that's fine. But to get into the specifics of the science, it's premature.
Okay. Fair enough. So again, my name is William Varell. I am a professional engineer, certified in Massachusetts. I'm a lead AP, and I've also designed drainage as my professional career, and reviewed plans by other engineers, including Stan Tech. And I think the important part about having the independent engineering analysis rather than peer review is you're getting someone that's not just looking at their information and determining if the decisions they made met some basic criteria, but is looking at it from an independent point of view for the entire site and making sure it works. And one of the critical things that are identified in the stormwater drainage thing is, let me just read Standard One, which has no new stormwater conveyance, e.g., outfalls and discharge untreated stormwater directly, oh, I'm sorry, untreated stormwater directly or cause erosion in wetlands or waters of the common. If that is not met, then the project cannot go forward. And it is my view, very strongly, that not only is this not met, that the applicant has done one of two things. He's either misled the town of Brookline with his report, or prepared a report that was so incompetently repaired, prepared, that the results find favor that it works when it actually doesn't. Now, I won't go into the specifics if you want, but I will tell you that that first criteria was not met whatsoever. And when you're looking through the report, the smoking gun, for instance, what you want to focus on, whether it's your engineer yourselves, is this subsurface basin D1C.
All right. You're getting into specifics now.
I know, I'm getting into specifics, and I'm just showing you. So without explaining to you, and you guys obviously don't want to hear exactly why it fails, so I can wait for them to explain how their system works and then explain how it does.
And the process will require us, we will require a peer review of that study and that evidence presented by the developer. Before we have that peer review, it's inappropriate for us to hear your opinion about it, because we don't have any opinion about it yet. So I understand your perspective, but this is, it's, the timing is not proper at this point.
Fair enough.
Mr. Chairman, might you encourage him to submit written comments so that you have them on file when the matter of stormwater comes up?
I think that's a fine suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'm not going to address what Mr. Varell just said, but this is not the first time that he's cast dispersions on the applicant and its consultants, and I just want to go on the record as saying that's entirely inappropriate in our view.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address us with their concerns? Then at this point, seeing none, the developer may respond as you wish.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members. I'm Mark Levin, Chestnut Hill Realty. I think we would prefer to defer, prefer to defer, to a future meeting, having gotten most of these reports just today in the afternoon. I would like to just comment on the planning board memo that we did get earlier. As I mentioned in my letter, we find it a bit ironic that their first letter in response to the conceptual design of residents of South Brookline suggested that we place the building in the southwest corner of the property, which is exactly what we did. Secondly, I'd like to, what I heard a lot of is about the visual impacts on the abutting buildings. I want to point out first that there are de minimis impacts and virtually none, if not no, visual impacts on any of the abutters. That's, I think, very important to keep in mind. It will, in fact, obviously, have impact on those buildings that were pointed out. And I do want to say that during construction, because of the blasting, those units will be vacant. And the people who move in, subsequently move in, and they will be renovated during that process, and the residents who move in subsequently will be doing so by choice, with that building clearly where it will be located, and presumably comfortable with the decision that they make. One of the overriding motives for our development at Hancock Village is to provide a diversity of housing choices. And I'm sure that there are, we believe firmly, and we've been good stewards of the property until now, and I suspect we will be long into the future, that the considerations that we're giving to those buildings that will be most directly affected is done with due Once again, I just want to emphasize that there are no impacts on, de minimis impacts on the actual abutters.
Just want to make one other comment that came up in Maria's presentation of the planning board's point of view on the project, which is the lot line for this project. And as I think we have explained to the planning staff, and I'm sure Maria knows, and Allison knows, and the board, and we're happy to present it to the board, that is a function of what we can do in order to not create any zoning nonconformities on the 40A lot. So it's not as though that was chosen randomly. That's what we need to do in order to preserve the 40A lot from zoning nonconformities. And we're happy to get into as much detail as the board would like on that.
Thank you. I have a question. Mr. Levin, during our site visit, I had asked you for some conceptual sites on the height of the building standing from certain perspectives, if you recall?
My recollection was, your request was the view from a couple of specific locations that the residents of the renovated units would be looking at.
Actually, Maria pointed out some of them in our cross-sections, but since you have the ability to generate a computer-generated view... the ability to generate a computer-generated view, and, you know, I know you have the road and the access, I asked if you would do that from a pedestrian standpoint.
I, that is certainly within our capability. We have developed a model, a drive-around model, similar to what we did at the...
Which is posted, I believe.
Did we send that along?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
I watched it today, yes.
Oh, okay. Very good. And we can take still, we can then, it takes some work, but the computer geniuses over at Stan Tech can pick, identify spots, and then create stills from those spots, and I committed to doing that, and we will.
All right. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Anything else from the applicant? Then at this point, I will let everyone know that our next hearing, we will address the urban design characteristics of the project, and we hope to have an urban design review from the town. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I've got some questions. So, Allison, where do we stand with the architectural and planning peer review? Do we have a consultant on board, or still...
Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. The town issued an RFQ for urban design consultants, and we received two responses. We've selected one. I hope to go to the board's selectman on Tuesday night to execute a contract.
Okay. And where do we stand? Let's see.
A week from tomorrow, then.
A week from tomorrow, right. Where do we stand on traffic and stormwater of peer review? It's down for us authorizing it at the next meeting, which has now been pushed back a week. And I wonder if we can't authorize you to proceed with getting those peer reviews lined up?
I'm already in the process of drafting RFQs and working with the chief procurement officer to release them.
Okay. Do we need to give her authorization? We gave authorization last time for the architectural peer review.
As I recall, the developer agreed to fund an urban design peer reviewer, a traffic peer reviewer, and a stormwater peer reviewer.
Yeah, I think we...
So I have authorization to proceed.
So we don't need to do anything?
I think we've already done it.
Right.
Okay.
So thank you.
When is our next hearing? Our next hearing is July 18th.
So for that hearing, we will have the urban...
We will have the urban peer review, and maybe some others will see what actually develops.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yes.
It is, it is a question for the developer, and you might be able to answer it. You referenced the creation of a lot that complies, you called it the 40A lot.
Right.
And the 40A lot refers...
That would be the balance of Hancock Village outside. This is, the lot that you're looking at, the subject of the project, is the subject of the 40B application.
I understand.
The rest of Hancock Village is not subject to the 40B application. And under zoning rules, by virtue of creating a 40B lot, we can deal within that lot and get whatever waivers we need. What we can't do is create a new zoning nonconformity on the rest of Hancock Village. And that's how we create, that's the reason for the creation of this lot.
I understand that. My question is, is this the only way you can create a lot in all of Hancock Village that will preserve zoning compliance with a portion of Hancock Village and allow you to seek...
Do you want to address that?
Approval of a 40B lot. In other words, is there any other possible way to configure the lot at Hancock Village that would permit you to seek 40B approval for a portion of the site and maintain zoning compliance with another portion of the site?
There are probably small, very small areas within some of the courtyard spaces that you could create a lot with. The problem would be, you couldn't get access to those lots, because you would either be removing parking or doing something else that created another nonconformity. So we looked at a number of different areas. The lots that we created in the first, I was supposed to talk about the first 40B, but the first 40B were lots that we felt we could create, that this was the only other place that we could find that we could create a lot to create any, any scale that you could build anything of any substance. I mean, there are, I suppose, small areas, but nothing of substance.
So you're qualifying it to a lot that would be of any scale or anything of substance? In other words, you could create...
That you could build units on.
That you could build any units on? Or a particular number of units?
I mean, not that we could figure out, honestly. I mean, I think...
So did you, did you direct, was your plan to have a certain number of units to build and then find a lot that would accommodate that number?
No. It was figure out what area you could get that would be a lot, and then figure, and then see what you could fit on that lot afterwards. So we figured out the area that, all of these like weird little curves there are setbacks from the existing buildings. And so we figured out that area first, and then determined what we could do with that area.
So is it fair to say, and again, I admit I don't know the answer to this, that all of Hancock Village without that 40B lot, if you had not created a 40B lot, is, is it in compliance with zoning requirement right now?
No.
It's not?
But we're not making it more nonconforming.
Okay. So you do have grandfathering...
Yes.
Right.
For the entire project?
Yes.
It complies in some respects, in some respects it doesn't.
Okay. I could just go on the record, I'd like to learn more about this. I'd like to understand what your zoning analysis was, what brought you to this conclusion. I'm not on the planning board, I'm on the ZBA, but I do have an interest in the analysis that went into creating what is admittedly a very strange lot.
It is a very strange lot.
Yes. And it, 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 it seems to me that logically, there had to have been other factors involved in creating that lot than simply telling an architect, I want a lot that I can build on, that will allow the rest of the site to remain in compliance with what already is a lot that doesn't completely comply, because you grandfathered in. So it's a pretty complicated analysis, and I just, I'd like to understand it.
But I would, I would say that your analysis just now is pretty much the direction we were given. You know, the problem is that between the NCD and the nonconformance, there's, you really have to look at those, those considerations that you pointed out to determine where the billable area is to create a 40B lot. So that is what we did.
Right. And the other thing you would be looking at is the cost of construction, and you've obviously chosen the most expensive place to build a building, which is where you have to blast the pudding stone. So there's many thoughts that go into determining where to locate something, and it's, you can't single one out. I'm just trying to understand that.
We're happy to explain that at the point where we talk about the site plan. We're happy to explain that at the point in the process where we talk about the site planning and the zoning.
I want to pick up on this a little bit, though, because I think it's a question that's been bothering me for some time. So what you're saying is that this here is based upon the setback from these buildings?
Yes.
Correct.
And you got these, you included this building because you could do it without having a setback?
But that's part of the 40B.
Well, no, it's part of the 40B, but why? Why is it part of the 40B? Why don't you just do it here? And could you, could you not just include the whole block as part of the 40B package?
We could, we could, and we would be required to renovate all of those buildings and make 25% of them affordable.
That's right.
And that's something we chose not to do.
When that gets into the question that was just raised about affordability, the cost, all of those things, which becomes unreasonable at that point.
And so you're, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris. No. And so your position is that you have carved out a lot that would allow you to avoid renovating existing units?
I wouldn't characterize it that way. I realize that's the way you just put it. I would say we carved out a lot that allows us to build a project, which we believe is economically viable and a good project. It doesn't require, you know, we are taking three of those buildings and renovating them and making what is now 100% market rate into 25% affordable. At a certain point, it doesn't become viable anymore.
Well, we might want to look at that further, actually. So why, why do you have to renovate this building, for instance? I mean, why, why couldn't you include some of these other buildings but not renovate? What does the renovation have to do with it?
I think that there needs to be a project associated with those. There needs to be, under the 40B rules, at least as I understand them, and the way DHCD interprets them, you can't just include existing units without any substantial renovation and include those as part of a 40B project. There needs to be a development project associated with every aspect of the, of the development.
So who defines substantial?
That's a good question.
Subsidizing agency.
I believe ultimately it would be up to the...
Subsidizing agency would review that and determine, well, it depends on whether it's mass housing or mass development, or whoever they're going to for a project eligibility letter, would review the project, which would include X number of units, and determine whether there's actually a development project there. And may or may not, would not issue a PEL if there wasn't a project.
Okay, but this doesn't justify, you know, there's plenty of project going on in this lot. So why is it you can't leave these alone and still have it in the lot?
Well, once you include them, it affects the calculus for the number of affordable units you have to provide.
That's right.
But I, I mean...
I don't see anything wrong with that.
I'm not, and I'm not saying that there is. All I'm commenting on in response to what the applicant was saying is that the subsidizing agency would review that and determine whether there's a project. And if there's no substantial investment going on to improve those other buildings, I don't know why they would include them. I can't imagine why the subsidizing agency would do that. I'm not speaking for them. Just commenting on my experience.
I think it depends on how you, how you define substantial investment. And I think that my colleague and I see other ways to get at this that could create some really nice, affordable units.
Yes.
More affordable units than the developer is proposing, frankly.
Then that would be a question...
And make a much better project overall for the community and address some of our concerns.
That would be a question to present to the subsidizing agency.
To the subsidizing agency?
Yes, yeah.
Also, the developer.
If the board has a question for the subsidizing agency, you may ask them.
I think, aren't we taking issue with whether the subsidizing agency has the authority to subsidize this project?
Perhaps.
Well, you may be, but that's the subsidizing agency. I mean, you...
So I think if we take issue with whether they have the authority to subsidize the project, I wouldn't look to them to advise us as to whether their interpretation of the statute is correct, personally.
I don't know who else to send it to, so...
Okay. I think we'll revisit this.
I think we can make our own decision on this.
I think we can revisit this later on.
I do, too. Yes.
May I just make one request, which is, as it relates to the peer review for the design, which is that we get at least a week in order to receive that before the next hearing, because we've, you know, I think that to receive it, you know, the day of, a day before, is just, does not give us enough time to respond.
Allison, do you have a response to that?
It's a very tight schedule, so...
Don't forget, we're bound by a time schedule, too.
One of the reasons why we, we just, we got a slew of letters today, the day of the hearing.
Well, so did we.
I realize you did. It wasn't your doing, but it, design is clearly a critical element of this project. I think everybody can agree on that. And really, I think there's an element of fairness to be able to hear, to be able to respond in a cogent way to what the peer reviewer has to say.
It's a reasonable comment. We will make every effort to get it to you as soon as possible. When it's ready, you'll have it, and then we'll see what timeframe we're operating under. That's all I can say.
That's all you can do.
Is it possible to make a comment?
I think we've heard from the public. Thank you. So this meeting is now continued to July 18th. Thank you for coming. I appreciate your input.